Call to order, Town of North Branford. WPCA and Town Council meeting Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 at 7:04 PM. We'll start with Sutro Flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, just, all.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us on a rather sticky Tuesday. All right, if you would, roll call, please.
Counsel Paladino.
Here.
Counsel Gold.
Here.
Counsel Abelson.
Here.
Counsel Mace.
Here.
Counsel Pletia.
Here.
Counsel Diamond.
Here.
Counsel Angeloni.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sampano.
Here.
Mayor Mill.
Present. Thank you. Okay. Item two, community events and presentations. Seeing none, we're going to move on to minutes of the previous meeting. Item A, August 15th, 2023, Town Council meeting. I'll accept the motion to accept the meeting with minutes.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Counsel Angeloni is seconded by Counsel Diamond. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? Thank you.
One abstaining here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Item four, correspondence, citizen statements and petitions. Do I have any? Seeing none. Onto item five, unfinished business. There's none. Item six, new business, discussion and action. Item A, 26 Mansfield Drive, map 62B, lot 29C, Totoket Woods Development LLC, request to connect to sanitary sewers. Victor, how are you, sir?
Good evening. Good, thanks. How are you, folks?
Good, thanks.
The applicant and their engineer weren't, basically didn't think they would need to come in tonight. This was a previous approval through the WPCA at February 2nd, 2021 meeting. The approval was to connect the proposed building on the above referenced property to sanitary sewers. The building would have been a new 4,800 square foot garage warehouse building with a 1,200 square foot office above. The special connection fee that was approved that night was in the amount of $12,000. The applicant has since come back and revised their plans. They are shooting towards a smaller building, just realizing that they don't need quite as much area. This is over at the Totoket Woods condominium, and this will be the property as you enter Totoket Woods. It'll be kind of their stationing area for groundskeeping and to have an office on site, too. So the new proposal would be for a 1,920 square foot warehouse, garage warehouse building with a 256 square foot office building on the second floor. That special connection fee, when calculating using the building's square footage, comes to $4,000. And I do have a suggested motion for you folks to consider tonight. I will just say, in reviewing the motion with the town attorney, we did realize that the sewer connection that they're proposing does enter the sewer main just upstream from the town-owned portion of Mansfield Drive. So it actually connects into the private section of Mansfield Drive, but all in all, the sewage flows end up going to the town system, and that's basically what we're charging the special connection fee for. So I did change just a couple lines in these suggested motions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What are the changes, Victor?
So the change was basically in the wording that the sewer lateral is not really connecting to the town-owned portion of the sewer main in Mansfield Drive. So I just took that wording out of there. I think it's basically on the second line. Propose is to extend the sanitary sewers from the existing sanitary sewers located on said property to connect, again, the size buildings that they're proposing.
Okay. So there's a motion suggested. Do I have someone that wants to make motion?
I make a motion to move the suggested motion that is, we just were handed revised as of 9:523.
Second. So we have a motion by Counsel Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you, Victor. Appreciate it. All right. So we have tonight a public hearing set for 7:30. We are at about 7:11, no, I'm sorry, 7:10 right now. So we have 20 minutes. I think we're going to skip ahead here in the agenda and move into reports of committees, regular Town Council meeting and reports of committees, boards and commissions on item seven. So if you would, item A.
Mr. Mayor, before we do, can I just?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda. Discussion and action for RFP 924003, which is the staffing of the ambulances in town. And if we can make that 12F on the agenda, that would be great.
Second. Okay, 12F. We're going to call the... How did you word that again? Motion 924?
924003. RFP 924003.
To discuss and take action.
Discussion and action, yes, sir.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend the agenda for discussion and action of RFP 924003. Do I have seconded it? I'm sorry. Seconded it from Counsel Mace, I believe. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? Thank you very much. Okay, that's been added.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to make a motion to amend the agenda. It'll be item 12G, and it is the acceptance of the steep grant for the new police department facility.
Second. Thank you. Steep grant. PD. Okay. So we have a motion by Counsel Angeloni, seconded by Counsel Mace. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? Okay. That's added as well as item G. And G and item F. Okay. I'm sure I don't miss that. All right. So thank you very much for making those additions. Onto reports of committees, boards and commissions. Item A, Economic Development Commission, please.
There is no meeting.
Thank you, sir. Item B, Parks Recreation?
The next meeting is at the end of September.
Okay. Item C, Police Commission?
The next meeting is Monday, September 11th.
Okay. Okay. Item D, Fire Commission?
Nothing to report at this time. The next meeting is this Thursday night.
Okay. Item E, Planning and Zoning Commission?
Next meeting Thursday, September 7th.
Thank you. Item F, Finance Subcommittee?
Next meeting is September 12th.
Okay. Item G, Public Safety Communications Subcommittee?
Okay. Well, I'm giving you a report. I'm just going to pass around one picture so people can see what's happening. This is what's happening at the Tilcon Tower.
Okay.
At the Tilcan Tower, right now, they're working on installation of the town equipment, finally. That should be completed by the third week of September. That's only one picture. If anybody wants, I have a whole bunch more. I didn't feel like printing them all in color, but I think that's coming along really well. In terms of the North Tower, the problem there is waiting for Verizon. Verizon has to go on the tower first. They have to get their equipment on there, and then after they get in, which hopefully will be done sometime this month, then Motorola has to come in and put the town equipment on, which will then take three to four weeks to complete. So there is a problem that, right now, it appears, unless I've heard, if someone's heard otherwise, that it probably will be December before everything's up and running in terms of those towers, which then may cause a little bit of a problem in terms of using Oshinkowski's Tower. And maybe you happen to come up with some more thoughts.
Having to extend that?
Yeah.
So when is that sunset? October?
October is hopefully the start date to put the town equipment on the whole on tower, but that's assuming that Verizon gets their equipment on there. In terms of the subscriber units, as far as I've heard, the police departments' radios are done. They're working on the fire department and suing Public Works. So right now, the big issue is just getting Verizon to get the money.
Is Verizon dragging their feet, or is it they have a company?
I don't have any answer unless Mike's heard otherwise.
Maybe we can have Town Attorney write a letter and urge the expediency of getting that done so we can get this project up and running. It's been delayed quite some time, and I think people are ready to get it done. I think waiting until December to complete that project is egregious. So we'll have a nice letter sent out to the Massacre to make some moves. And Town Attorney, would you please let us know if and when they respond?
I will.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your report.
Okay. Onto item H, CIWWA?
Yeah. Next meeting is September 27th.
Okay. Okay. Mike, we have about 15 minutes or so. Is that enough time for you to start your town manager report?
I can do it.
Okay. So item A, Town Manager Report. Item A, General Updates. Your show, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Good evening. The East Haven takeover of the ACO duties, as you know, took place on September 1st, and as the council is aware, East Haven's begun providing animal control services to our town effective that date last Friday. I took the opportunity to visit the ACO team as well as meet up with East Haven Mayor Joe Carfora at the East Haven Animal Shelter on their first day serving North Branford and welcome them to serving our community. And they got their first call from North Branford at 2:00 AM, essentially two hours after the start time midnight.
It always takes.
So they were on immediately. The Blueprint Committee, the organizational meeting for the Blueprint Committee, was held on Wednesday, August 23rd, here in the council chambers. Members were sworn in with Deputy Mayor Tom Zampano being elected as chairman and Member Dan Arman being selected as vice chairman. Future meetings will be held 7:00 PM on the fourth Wednesday of every month, alternating with Edward Smith Library and Atwater Library through to March when they are charged with delivering their recommendations to this council. Details on meeting times and locations are published on the town website. The Shoreline Chamber of Commerce held their annual Women of Excellence Awards Ceremony Luncheon on Tuesday, August 22nd, at Woodwinds in Branford. The event honored two women of distinction from each community in North Branford, Branford and Guilford, who made significant contributions to their communities this year. The honorees were from North Branford, Counselor Rose Angeloni, who is recognized for excellence in public service, and Bonnie Samansky, who is recognized for excellence in arts and community service. I was pleased to join with Mayor McMillan, State Representative Vin Candelora, State Senator Christine Cohen, and Anthony Afrey of Congresswoman Rosa Delora's office to recognize these two outstanding residents for their numerous contributions to our community. The two towers, Marie pretty much took the entire update, like, right out of my hands, so she shortened it, so we're closer to the public hearing. FEMA conducted its inspection of the PD and EOC project on August 23rd. I met with FEMA personnel at the construction site, where they took some photos and viewed the drawings, and also observed the easement set aside and fenced off by DPWN Newfield, keeping construction away from where items of interest had been uncovered from the archaeological study. They're quite pleased with what they saw relative to the project, as we are much farther along than any of the other projects in this grant group, and they are looking forward to holding us up as an example of an excellent project.
They didn't find the ticket source we had?
They did not find that. I told them to go to Tilcon.
Yeah.
Following this visit, we are cleared to begin submitting for reimbursements. We've set the date for bulky waste collection this fall, and it will take place the week of November 6th through 10th. The council will recall that we were required to renegotiate for bulky waste collection for years three, four, and five of our five-year contract, which is why we didn't have that date set earlier in the year as we ordinarily do. I'd remind residents that we also have a scrap metal collection coming up this fall, the week of October 23rd, on your regularly scheduled trash collection day. Scrap metal includes appliances and large appliances such as refrigerators with the doors removed, metal lawn furniture grills, small machines, and non-riding lawnmowers with the gas removed. As you know, Patty Schaefer recently retired from our finance department. I'm pleased to report that Jill Drezek has begun work as our new AP Account Clerk and is training in this post. Also, as you are aware, Anita Mancini has retired as our staff accountant to take the post of Finance Director in Old Lime. We are currently interviewing candidates for this vacancy. Anita is unable to join us to recognize her service, but we did produce a plaque recognizing her retirement and are sending that to her. In the meantime, we have a very experienced temporary replacement in that position until we were able to fill it permanently. Trunk or Treat, the Park and Rec Department is gearing up to put on their annual trunk or treat Halloween event for kids. The event takes place at Stanley T. Williams Community Center from 2:00 to 3:30 Saturday, October 14th, rain or shine. And anyone interested, whether individual or group or family, they are looking for people once again to put on trunks and hand out candy to the kids during that time. That concludes my report. Mayor, I think I made it.
Good. That was good. Thank you, Mike. Well, we have another eight minutes here. Do we want to go into Permanent Project Building Committee, item B?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Police Department EOC project, the erecting the steel work continues, and the project remains on schedule for early spring completion. NBIS, some reappointing has been done in window sills reset. And NBHS, work continues on the punch list, and the phase demo remains in process. And Stanley T. Williams Community Center, the roof is done and the warranty has been issued. The fascia punch list has been identified, and final work is scheduled for this month. Thank you.
Mike, remind us, when is the completion? I know there's going to be the completion of the athletics facility, that portion of the high school being done, and then they're going to come back in the spring to do the plantings. Is that's a 2025 completion, or what was the number, the date on that?
I don't know. You can kind of flatfoot it on that. The plantings, I'm not sure.
I don't remember either, so it's...
What's the schedule list for that? But I can certainly get that.
Someone asked me the other day, and I thought I'd make mention to it.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't remember either, and I was on the, already said that, so I forgot. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we have, we have a couple minutes here. I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to skip over citizen statements and petitions and go back to that, so we give it enough time? I think there's some folks.
We've got enough time, right?
Well, we have 13. We can go to, we have five minutes. Yeah. So we'll go into that. Item nine, citizens' statements and petitions and correspondence. Please state your name and address, and try to keep it relatively brief, three to minutes or so. Thank you, sir.
Flip Potter, Middletown Avenue, Norfolk.
Hi, Mr. Potter.
Very sad to read what I read in a Facebook page today about the names disappearing off the beam. I have a cure. Here are magnetic markers and ball colors. And clear lacquer. Spray it over after, and your name will not disappear.
Well, there were a lot of names that were off of there.
A lot of markers, though.
Right. Well, they found out what the problem was.
Okay. I took it personally because you people donate so much of your time to have the slate wiped clean.
Can you get her up there? You put it on your shoulder so she can sign it? We'll find a way. We'll get it.
We have to bring in helicopters.
Yeah. Yeah, we have the helicopters come back. There you go. That's very nice of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Griffin.
Thank you.
So the issue was that some of the markers that they gave us to sign with were not permanent markers, and so the rain washed off a lot of the people that signed on the beam.
Kind of your own marker.
So I believe the police commission is going to address this at their next meeting next week, and then we'll see what happens.
What are you doing on purpose?
Huh? No, it was...
Yeah. Can't grab that dry erase marker and think it could stay.
They were all Sharpies, though. I didn't know.
No. Some came from the whiteboard inside.
They were like Sharpie whiteboard markers?
Well, no. No, they were dry erase markers. Definitely were dry erase.
Oh, really? I didn't, I know I used a red Sharpie and signed it, and I know, like, everyone that signed, at least in the color red, and it might have been purple, they all came off.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yes, they did.
Well...
But, so.
I don't say about that, but...
It's a thought that counts.
Yeah. We will be having a strongly worded letter from our attorney to go to Sharpie. Okay? I'm Brian. Why don't you make notes to that?
It was more Newfield, then.
Well, then Newfield's going to be CC'd on that. Yeah. Okay.
It's almost as bad as the Branford North side.
Yeah, right. The Branford North side, yeah. We do sign it well here. I give you our tagline for economics. We do sign it well. All right. Okay. Any other citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence? Yes, sir. And we are running it up against time. I ask to keep it to about three minutes or so.
I'll give you a break.
Thank you, sir.
Bill Sanistano, Sunny Side Drive. As a moral business, back in August, I forget to mention it, but I thought that in July, when you signed the contract or passed the animal control thing, I thought it was great. Great, meaning that you all really did a good job on finding the do's and don'ts. I noticed you all had a good participation, whether the outcome was one thing, but the fact that you did that do, do, was good. And I'll say one thing, hopefully, in maybe two and a half years, you know, every once in a while, I talk about the trash contract. Well, I hope you're just as involved then as you were on the animal contract. And while Al is in the room, I noticed I'm reading some of the minutes from the Project Committee, the Premier Project Committee. They, obviously, we know they go on a long time, but, I mean, they've been running up against a lot of little things there that I'm really glad to have Dave and Al, you know, watching things off of us. But thanks, Al. I know he's here. Oh, yeah. My head's off to you. Don't always agree with Al, but in this case, okay.
Can't win them all, Al.
We still have a minute?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah. I just want to talk about, you're going to be talking about the Veterans Council tonight. It's on the agenda. It's something I've spoken more recently, a month ago, and in the past several times. And if it's along the lines of what's been sort of mandated by the state, be happy to see it formed. Hopefully, we'll get it done, and we'll get some young people behind it, so. I have a couple more comments, but I can wait till the end of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. All right. Any other citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence? All right. I thought that might be the case. All right. So we have item 13, so we can push it to there. We can push item 13. There's citizen statements petition there as well, so we'll go to that on the end there. Okay. We have, we'll get through 10 here real quick. All right. So item 10, resignations and appointments. On first, I'd like to, I see on our agenda here, the resignation of Charles Urbano from Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member. I asked Mike to remind me of this because I wanted to thank Charles for, not only his work here in North Branford, but one of the reasons why he is, and I hope it's okay that I'm disclosing this, that he's leaving this committee is that he's accepted a position in the Marine Corps and is reporting to duty on September 11th, 2023. He was serving his second four-year term. So I wanted to publicly thank him. And apropos to what Bill just said in his comments, where young folks are taking action to help our nation and to serve, I think it's an absolutely wonderful thing, and I appreciate it tremendously. So I want to thank you, Mr. Urbano, for taking on, you know, this particular position here in North Branford, and of course, your next, you know, opportunity. Sure.
I haven't touched this child quite a bit. And he's going back as an officer. He's even reenlisting and reenlisting as an officer.
That's wonderful.
You can't, you can't find another gentleman that's on those little chucks here.
Yeah, that's...
I'm glad we can recognize him from Christmas time or something, you know, people touching him, but yeah, he's, he's...
Yeah.
Patriot driven.
We clearly see that. Well, I want to make sure that we recognize that, that it's not someone leaving committee because they have other things to do. He's got something very important to do, and that's extremely honorable. So thank you, Charles. Appreciate it. Okay. So that being said, I'll accept a motion for, do we have to have a motion for resignation? Just an announcement, right? Okay. And then onto item B, appointment of Jennifer Ash to the Blueprint Committee to replace Steve Torino as a regular member?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Counsel Angeloni. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my pal. Excuse me. Sorry, I guess. Okay, sorry. Second by Counsel Pletia. Sorry, I was, my tongue, my throat, go away. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry. Have the motion, the second. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? Okay. Okay. Here we are, 7:28. So we're going to move into the public sphere.
Public hearing.
Rose, if you would, read that, please.
And I thought we have to wait until 7:30.
We have to actually read until 7:30, so?
You should wait until 7:30, Mr. Chair.
I have a real quick thing.
Wait. You can do item 11.
Okay. We'll wait till 7:30.
All right.
All right. Item 11, unfinished business, discussion action, none. Now we have to wait till, you said we have to wait till 7:30 before?
No, I know. I wasn't going to do that. I would, I'd like to amend the agenda with the resignation of Charles Urbano from Planning and Zoning. He's a regular member. So I'd like to add item 10C, which is to appoint one of the alternates as a permanent member to take Charles's spot. So it's Barry Ponder, who is currently as an alternate. So I'm making a motion to amend the agenda to make that appointment.
Okay. So we got a motion by Counsel Angeloni, seconded. Any?
No, we have a second already. Mr. Abelson, I may please second it. But thank you, sir.
Counsel Abelson has seconded it. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? Okay. And I thank Barry for taking on the permanent...
I just amended the agenda.
Oh, amended the agenda, of course.
So now I'd like to make a motion to appoint Barry Ponder as a regular member of Planning and Zoning to replace Charles Urbano with a term to expire 5/31/26.
Seconded. Okay, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Mays. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained. Okay, thank you now, Barry, for doing on that. Do we have to amend for alternate or you're not, we're not there yet?
No, because we didn't submit it. It'll be on the next.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna stop here, we'll come back to 11. We're gonna go into the public hearing if, so we've got 7:30, public hearing, designation in the town of North Branford as a rehabilitation area and establishing criteria for the eligibility of real property for assessment, referral, and administrative procedures. So we can read the.
The notice of public hearing, the North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on designating the town of North Branford as a rehabilitation area and establishing criteria for the eligibility of real property for assessment, referral, and administrative procedures dated at North Branford, Connecticut, the second day of August, 2023. Michael P. Downs, Town Manager, email public comments to public comments at townofnorthbranfordconnecticut.com.
Thank you very much. Okay, so public hearing is now open. Do we have any citizen comments?
No comments.
We close right away, we don't have that.
We're red wave, no one's.
Do you have a citizen comment? Yes, sir.
Bill Sanistano. I have a comment I have, I'm a little familiar with this because it goes back a few years. I remember, I think, when it was first established, but can you please explain for me and maybe the benefit for the crowd, just how much money we could possibly lose?
How much money could we lose? I don't know if I can cut.
Well, when you defer taxes, you're obviously losing some money. You'll hopefully get it back after, after the rehab is done, but I mean, again, that's the, the basis of that is a little bit odd for me to understand. I understand the process, what it means, but could we be losing something in the long run?
I mean, if you're, if you're deferring it, we will essentially just receive it in the future, but I think it's difficult to figure out what the compounding interest would be that we'd lose. I don't think there's an accurate answer that we can supply in that, but.
Well, it also depends on the project.
Yeah.
I think the idea is to gain on net benefit over the, over the course of time by bringing tax money into the, it's twofold, the way I see it, you know, you're bringing tax, eventually bringing tax money back into the town and you're also improving properties in town. So you're improving.
Let me say that. And just to remind you, this is a public hearing. Before you establish this, it's not really a debate or, you know, opportunity to answer public's questions, it's for the public to comment, not to pose questions. Any of your public comments, you know, when you, you're welcome to receive, obviously, comments from the public, but you don't need to respond to them at that time.
Okay. And do you want to give a quick synopsis of what this entails, Mike? Do you mind?
Yeah, this is the, this is the renewal of the program that we've already had in place for tax deferral for, for businesses that they've been taking advantage of. It sunsetted in September of 21. We've still been taking applications on it, obviously, so when we eventually do this, we'll have to do it retroactively. But the next step after this would be to send it to P&amp;Z, so they'll do an 824, and they'll be sending it back to you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so.
And what exactly is it for, Mike?
I would bring up our Assistant Town Manager, who's been working on this today, and our Assessor, because they.
For everybody to hear.
What's mine? Absolutely. Our Assessor is here tonight, thank you.
Yeah, sure. So the basics of it are that it freezes the tax assessment for a development project. So you're not necessarily losing tax revenue, right? It's frozen as it was.
Any increase, any increase in assessed value is deferred over a five-year period. The money's not recouped, it's just an incentive to encourage development in town. So the money is not recouped.
The, the value of the increase is phased in over the course of five years.
Understood.
So it's like an incentive. It's a business incentive.
It's a business incentive, economically viable.
It's worked pretty well so far.
Good.
So when they freeze the funds for the five years, so the tax, the taxes are added, it's like, they're still accrued?
No. So, so, you know, if you are starting with an empty lot, they're still paying the taxes as they existed prior to development.
Right.
It's just the value of the tax increase is deferred until the project is completed, and then the full value of the increase is phased in over five years.
Yeah.
So 20% a year.
It makes it.
It's frozen the first year, then 21.
Attractive to build in North Branford versus being hit with the taxes, you know, throughout the entire project.
So your first year of completion, you're not paying the full amount you're gonna be paying. It's stretched for five years.
The first year after the CO is issued, you're paying the previous 10-1 assessment.
Yeah.
So any increase is deferred, it's frozen the first year, then 20% each year afterwards until 100% in the sixth year.
Okay.
And again, and this is something you have to approve on a per, it's not automatic to anyone doing development, number one. And number two is you, you're also designating your town as a rehabilitation area, which you need to do to designate, to make it available to people in the town. So that's why it says designation of North Branford is.
Understood.
And there's approximately 14 parcels on the program right now.
Okay.
I have a question.
Good.
So I understand that this is, if a single homeowner is, has a lot in mind, or is it a development, somebody's gonna, well, lots, and am I missing something here?
It's for five units or more.
Five units or more.
Zone commercial or?
Not five parcels, five units, a five-unit apartment building and over, or other commercial industrial property.
The single-family homes, not.
Single-family homes are not included.
Commercial property.
I have a better understanding than I thought you had.
It's not zoned for that.
Back to the town of being, was it rehab?
A rehab area.
Is that something we have to do or something that we want to do?
It's, it's a, it's a local option that we agreed to, that we voted to approve.
Something you wanted to do.
I'm asking, because I don't know, so I'm saying, is, is this a benefit to the town or not a benefit?
I can answer if you have to versus if you want to. You have to in order to, you have to make the designation in order to avail yourselves of the ability to defer the taxes. You have to designate the town or portions of the town as rehab areas. Whether you want to, that's, that's more of a subjective question on an application-by-application basis. You could look at the application and see, you know, what, what benefit this is bringing to the town economic development-wise, and are you in a position to? It's not automatic to grant that abatement to that, to that particular application.
Correct, it still has to be done per instance.
You can look at what the development is, jobs that may be brought in, et cetera. It's not automatic. By voting, by doing this, it's not, it's by no means automatic.
Gives you the option to do it, not necessarily.
The right, not the obligation to do it.
Is this a state requirement or?
The state requirement is that you make a designation of a portion or the entire town as a rehab area before you.
Town Council has to do something with this because of the state of Connecticut.
If you want to have a different.
Single-family houses has to be something five units or more.
Under your particular program, right? Towns can have different programs, they can have a lot of different, you know, some do them for residential, you know.
The second part of that, establishing of criteria is something that, you know, we would discuss before you approve the program.
Okay.
So we haven't established the areas?
You would be designating the entire town, but the criteria of the program have not.
It's already in place. It has been because we had 14 businesses that took advantage of it.
It's a positive. It is a positive.
It is your entire town now, this is just a public hearing because you need to reestablish all or part of North Branford as a rehab area at this time.
No, I get it. Now I totally understand exactly what this program is. Still a little confused, but I do understand it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you taking time to give us another explanation. Are there any other statements? All right, Bill.
Now I'll tell you the real reason I asked the question. And since we're not gonna get a Q and A session here, but I, you know, I've been coming here a number of years. I remember eight years ago when this thing was in effect. I remember one of the larger construction companies, I need to say the name, in town took advantage of it. And if I'm, my information is correct, that five years later, when that ran out, basically, he took advantage of, because of the pandemic, he didn't get all his stuff done, he got another five years. Now, again, I'm not asking, I'm not supposed to go back and forth here, but I think I'm pretty right in that. If that's the case, then I'd say be careful, we don't do that again, because now someone's taking advantage of it. Thanks.
Program works like that. All right, well, we can look into it, I'm not sure if it works like that, but we'll look into it. Okay. I just want to make sure we have accuracy there. All right, so is there any other statements? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close? Do we need a motion to close?
You can declare it closed.
All right, clear, closed. Thank you. Okay.
That's closed.
Case closed.
All right. Didn't say bang gal.
Yes. New gavel, this one's kind of aggressive, make a little more noise. The other one, go. All right, item 12, actually, I'm sorry, item 11, unfinished business discussion action, there's none. Move on to item 12, new business discussion action. Item A, creation of a Veteran Service Commission, set a public hearing date. Okay, so, Mike, if you would, can you give a little synopsis of this for us? It's something you've been patiently working on.
Yep, be pleased to. So.
Thank you.
This came about in my conversations with a number of resident veterans, a couple of them are here tonight. Just, you know, initially, I thought maybe like a year or two ago that, you know, as we all know, a VFW that we had here closed down. And initially, I sort of thought that, you know, it'd be great to try to get that thing up and running and help veterans locally do that, but it seems that, you know, most of the veterans that I've spoken to locally don't seem to think that there's much of a chance of a VFW being resuscitated, at least within this town. And a lot of the members that are interested in being in VFWs already participate in ones that are in other locations. And that kind of leaves a gap in town in terms of veteran service organization, and so that's why I came up with, you know, this idea to kind of formalize an actual town commission, a Veteran Service Commission, which would have the responsibility of doing a number of activities that are veteran-related and veteran-supportive. I think everybody knows that this town is extremely supportive of its veteran community. And I think that this will help provide an outlet for formal construction of events and memorials centered around and dedicated to the service of our local veterans. The way I envisioned it is there's a couple of ways that the council could go about this, and I've given you two examples of the way it might be done. One would be by ordinance, that's the one I personally prefer, as it gives more permanence. But in both instances, whether you do it by ordinance or resolution, the construction I'm proposing is essentially for members from each side of town, Northford and North Branford. Two of those members from each side would be veterans themselves, and then the other two members from each side would be individuals who had immediate family as veterans, and immediate family is defined in this as a spouse, a parent, or a child. My thinking behind that is that it doesn't just make only veterans capable of serving on it, and it also opens it up to anybody who's familiar with a VFW. They have an auxiliary which contains family members, and of course, depending on which VFW you go to, they do a lot of the legwork in actually making the operation run. So I wanted to make sure that that, that type of resident was included in this. So that's essentially the, the idea that I put before you. I would envision this commission as, you know, taking over Memorial Day, creating something for Veterans Day. Another idea that I had was creating and administering a Veterans Hall of Fame. I've seen other towns that do that, and it's nothing more than dedicating wall space in the town hall to a Veterans Hall of Fame, where they would, this commission would be responsible for nominating and inducting members, and then we would hang their portraits up for, you know, veterans that have served with distinction that, you know, we're proud of and are residents of the town. So those are the types of things that I envision them overseeing and handling, and so both of those possible ideas are before you tonight.
I appreciate you putting this together. I know you put a lot of work into this, and it's, I think it's a very important committee to have put together for, for the folks in this town, to continue to recognize our, our very important veterans. Brian, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, just, just to remind you that once you're on one commission, should you create the commission, you can only serve at one, serve on one at a time in North Branford.
Okay, so this would be, if we did this, any, even if we did it as a.
Resolution.
Resolution versus.
Correct.
It's still same thing, if you're on this, you know, obviously, we want to see folks, new folks come on, particularly might be a good way for younger folks to, you know, get involved within our organizations and our different various committees, but it is important to note that, you know, we still have that same ordinance as, as per our code. Okay, good to know, thank you.
Is the town council considered a board or commission?
Town council is not a board or commission, it's the council for the town.
So someone on the council could serve on this.
Let me check your charter language.
Because I think the code says, or elected office, so it might preclude council members too.
That means somebody is already on a board or commission, we can't serve on another one.
Correct.
So then none of the council members can serve on it.
Well, that's why I asked the question, because they said that council isn't a board or commission, but Mike just brought up.
But it depends on your board, it depends on your ordinance. You're not a board or commission, but you have ordinance, so you have to check the, for that.
Well, you have counselors on other committees.
Right.
Blueprint.
Right, but that's, like the Blueprint Committee, for example, that's, you know, you have requirements, part of that construction of is that you want representatives from a certain board or commission.
Correct.
So you can't expect them, obviously, to resign from Planning and Zoning to represent Planning and Zoning.
Yes.
That's the whole point that they're on there, so.
That makes sense.
Right, but is that why it's a committee and not a commission?
It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't make a difference whether it's a committee or a commission, as long as it's constructed by the town council and it's an official town body, whether it's a committee, commission, or created by resolution or ordinance, no one can serve currently on more than one board or commission.
Right, that's, that's my question. So I'm on the Blueprint Committee.
Well, it's different.
Right, the Blueprint Committee was constructed to have a council, two council representatives on it, so you and Counselor Abelson are required to be on there specifically because you're a council member.
Well, wouldn't we be able to do something like that, creating this commission?
We'd have to have specific commissions.
Yeah, you would probably, I mean, I would let the town attorney answer that, but I would think you would need to demarcate where that is, you know, like, you can say in the, in the Veteran Service Commission that you're required to have two town council members on it.
Then you can't make it a commission, you make it a committee.
Wait, you have to know what it is. Is this a, is this a? I have to look at the ordinance first, yeah. Cross that bridge, Mike.
I appreciate bringing up this, it's an important thing to think about as we ponder how to build this.
Well, so right now, all we need to do is, we have to have a public hearing.
Correct.
So we can do that, that motion while these town attorneys looking.
Absolutely, let's do that.
If it's a commission, I mean, I'm not sure where Rose was going with this, but you could have a liaison, just like the fire commissioner or the police commissioner, unless you're looking for somebody to have on the commission, but if somebody wanted to do that from the town council, I'm sure you could probably do that.
Yeah, that could happen, you're correct.
I would think we can do anything we want, as long as we construct it properly.
Right, you could build, you could build into the.
Right.
Commission, the requirement that a council member serves on it, if that's what you wanted to do.
Or ex officio. Time with me. Or ex officio. All right, well, why don't, why don't we set the hearing date?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that a public hearing be set at 7:30 PM on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023, for a proposed amendment to the Code of the Town of North Branford for the creation of a Veteran Service Commission.
Seconded. Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained. Okay, thank you. Please note, Michael, that we'll have that on the 3rd, October 3rd. Okay. And then from here.
Listen, my question is, is, because there's a, an ordinance in our packet, you know, like some verbiage, so do we need to change that now, or is that done after?
You could do that after the fact.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we, something to start to think about, you know, and get, Brian, if you would, I don't think you have to necessarily go through the code right now, but something you can do between now and then, just get us an update on, we can figure out how we want to construct this. We definitely want to construct this.
I can tell you now, it's in your charter, it's not an ordinance, actually, it's in your charter, 10-3.
Okay.
Conflict, it's entitled Conflict of Offices. No person shall hold more than one elective or council-appointed office position or committee membership at the same time in the town of North Branford, except justice of the peace or notary public, or membership on a joint board, commission, or committee or coordinating body, and no person shall hold incompatible town office as set forth in the general statutes. No person shall hold more than one elected or council-appointed office position or committee membership, and no person shall hold membership on a commission, shall hold more than one positions on a commission or committee.
Okay.
So that's by charter, so you can't change, you cannot change that by ordinance, because the charter will trump your, any.
Yeah, so you'd have to open up the charter.
Have to do a charter revision, which is.
So how do we relate that to the Blueprint Committee?
Well, because the, when we formed it, we said that there were two council.
Because you did noted.
Yeah, but, but what Brian just said, that you can't change it.
Yeah. But isn't that a committee of the town council?
I'm just saying. We just spun around here that a commission and a committee, it's all the same, so which is, you know, which is, I don't know.
Is a, wait, is a commission and a committee the same?
So really, it sounds like you can't be on.
I mean, it's semantics.
Semantics, but purposes of this charter provision are the same.
Right.
Or, well.
Well, that is Tom, that you can't serve.
You can be on as a, as a member, as an adjacent member to a specific project.
Be a liaison to that committee.
And you have an advisory role. This isn't advise, your blueprint committee is really an advisory committee to you as to direction you are steering the town.
Correct.
Sorry, I believe that's how we
But can you, can he be on, be an advisory to himself and us?
Yeah.
It's like a liaison, a position essentially.
What?
Forget it. Forget it. They're rules. We do well.
That's not something new. All right. That's something I'd like to, we'll look at that and take a look at it. Want to make sure we do it correct. And if we found out we didn't do it right, we got to get a sergeant of arms to take him out of here.
Well, and Bruce, because they're
Right.
No, I'm, I am not on any committee. I'm only on the council. So I actually can serve on the blueprint committee. So I'm not on any boards or commissions.
Well, that's
You're elected though.
You're elected.
Yeah.
I'm not in any.
You're not on anything either.
Who's on first?
So then I'll be an advisory.
All right. We're going to move fast for now.
So we'll just change it to be a liaison.
So that means that everything that we did is not correct.
All right. We don't, we're going to look into, we're going to talk to Brian and make sure he figures it out. And then we'll come back to address it once we've looked at, had time to look at the charter and how we created it. Can't do it with the public camera.
No, I'm not going to.
Okay. All right, so we got that. We created a Veteran's Service Commission on the item B, resolution amending the membership of the blueprint committee. We did not vote on, yeah, we voted on the, yeah, we sent the public hearing.
October 23, right?
The 3rd of October.
October 3.
Yeah.
Can we vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I stepped off for a second. No, it's okay. It's okay, right? Okay, item B, resolution amending the membership of the blueprint committee. So the reason, obviously, I have the blueprint committee, Tom, but one of the reasons that this was brought up is that some of the members felt that they're already on another commission, that it's time away from, sometimes they can't always make the meeting. And they wanted to have a backup, which we talked about. I think what we're going to do, maybe we have to press forward on that and see if we can come back to it, Brian, if it's vitally
I don't think this, this doesn't have anything to do with that. This is just the backups from people that are designated from the The whole purpose of this advisory committee is that it's made up of members of the council and it's made up of members from the public and then members from certain
Pertinent boards or commissions.
So the idea was at that, at that meeting that the residents got a backup with an alternate in the creation of the committee. So the members who are from the boards of commissions also wanted to have that to ensure continuity of their boards being represented if something should, should come up, so.
Basically, we were doing it for, if they didn't show up that, for that evening, an alternate is able to sit there and
Yeah, which is pretty typical. Makes perfect sense.
The one from the other board and commission to be on that board.
Can I put a gag bullet on him?
It's just, it's just.
Set yourself in, Tom.
I think for the purpose of this now, to get, this, this committee is only in existence for a period of time before they have to report back to us with some findings. So we want to make sure that we get this moving along. They've had one meeting. They have now set their schedule, you know, for the go forward. I'd like to see this kind of formulate and so they can get moving on it.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council amends the membership of North Branford's Blueprint Committee to add one alternate member designated from each of the following commissions, Park and Recreation Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Economic Development Commission.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilor N'Golani, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion?
Yeah, can we vote on this, Tom and myself, because we're on it? Can we vote for that?
That's a good question. I believe so, but yes, okay. Okay, you can put your, your counselor hat on right now.
Hey.
Okay, that's a, that's a real question. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion based on the last vote we just took to amend the agenda to add item 12H, the appointment of Steve Torino as the alternate from Park and Recreation to the Blueprint Committee.
Okay.
Second. I was going to ask a question, but I'll wait.
It's just amending the
I know.
You can't ask it right now. All right, we got the seconded by Councilor Code. Okay, motion by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Code. Any discussion?
Why is Steve stepping away? Did he give a reason?
Yeah, he's got a, something month old that
I know he does.
And his wife works nights. And so, and being on
He was all for this and
Yeah, just
Personal reasons.
Yeah.
So that, that's why
The first time dad is surprised how tired you are.
Oh, no, we talked about that.
God bless him.
Yeah, so we have, they have a regular and now he said he would be the alternate.
Yeah. Okay, but no, he's, absolutely, that's a good thing. All right, thank you. All right, all in favor? Aye opposed, abstained? Okay, item A has just been added? All right, on to item C, fiscal year 24, G.I.S. service contracts. All right, Mike, you want to prize this? Oh, the mayor's victory.
Good evening again. So Ty and Bond has been our G.I.S. service provider since 2010. Bulk of services that they provide include G.I.S. web hosting, tax map updates, and as-needed technical assistance. The original agreement was extended year to year through amendments to that agreement. We're on amendment number 11 right now. And the, the fees for the, each additional year has not gone up each year of the amendment being extended. So that's been a plus over the 10 years, for the 10-plus years that we've been working with them now, 13 years. The terms and conditions contained in the original agreement will also be honored and remain in effect under the agreement number 11. I also have Dave Ambrose here, being from the assessor's office, obviously. The, from the G.I.S. perspective, you'd wonder, well, why is engineering up here? We're more of the, the source of where the data came from that was handed over to Ty and Bond to basically run and host the G.I.S. system. I think that from the assessor's point of view, and if Dave wants to weigh in, more of the day-to-day and the, especially the, the fees that come up on top of the, the web hosting portion of it all are fees that are produced from that office being property line changes, lot line revisions, property card changes, things like that. So on a, almost probably a weekly, monthly, daily basis, they're, they're coordinating those changes.
Right, we, we do the map changes for the town. If the properties split or combined, we do the changes in our office. And we provide Ty and Bond with a email asking them to make the changes, and they do. But is that, are those charges included in our annual, annual fees?
So, sorry, those are the as-needed charges. So the web, the web hosting portion of it, per the agreement, per the original contract and the agreements, is $3,500. That's the flat fee for them to host the G.I.S. website for the year. And then there's up to $5,000 additional dollars for a total of potential $8,500 for those as-needed, if you want to call them à la carte, services that they provide.
There's, there's probably a couple dozen changes that we do per year. So it's, it's reasonable amount. And yeah, I think we're charged, like you said, à la carte for those changes.
So why wouldn't you do, or ask for a multi-year? If we're, if we're on amendment 11, would they do it two-year or something like that so that you don't have to keep coming every year to renew it?
We, we could work with them on a multi-year document. I think this is one of those times where we're in front of you folks with amendment 11. I think the amendments have been moving along and signed off over the, the years without coming to the commission. But we want to make you aware of this. The town manager wanted to make you folks aware of this, that we are kind of extending these amendments. We're happy with their services and we can look at a two- or three-year extension on it. And if Dave, if you want to weigh, weigh in on that, I think it's a good idea.
About the
Yeah.
I mean, I, I see this is March 8 of 2010. So my guess is that's kind of the starting date. So we're already almost six months into this year. But I would suggest for the next one, before it comes to us, that if there's a possibility of doing a multi-year or something
I was thinking about going off the bid the next time around.
Okay.
There are other, other companies that provide the same type of service and are equally as good as Ty and Bond, but they're more of a mom-and-pop type of situation where they don't really charge for these à la carte changes that we make. So I talked to Victor and we kind of hoping to go out the bid next time around.
Okay.
More or at least
I have another question too. Why in the suggestive motion, wouldn't you have put not to exceed $8,500? And since there's no amount in there? I mean, it seems to me that should be in the motion.
Well, it's, it's in the
I know it's in the letter, but I mean, with the motion, I, I just think it should be in the motion.
Yeah, you could certainly, that's a, that's a good idea, certainly, to match the amendment, sure. Let's save a question.
So you, I mean, you're okay with that?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I mean, if, if we ever have to go over on it, which I don't
Because it does say in the letter not to
Right, right, right. I mean, we would obviously have to go through the motions with finance department and approvals to go over and above that number. But we typically try to, you know, work with if we're, we're getting close to that, to the 5,000 à la carte services where we just wait till the next fiscal year to, to do those. And that, that seems to work out.
Usually, we only have like 12 to 13, or a couple dozen per year, so it's manageable. So I don't think we'll ever exceed that amount.
And would you want to get it so that it runs, the contract runs our fiscal year instead of
I, I think the, it is the fiscal year. I mean, we're, we're into this fiscal year already with them. Probably produce, they typically, I think, produce an invoice around October. So I don't know why the, the lag. And I usually try to have this signed for the, the two years that I've worked with this. I usually would try to have it signed before the fiscal year starts. So just getting it on the agenda and everything has been a little delay in doing that, so. Yeah, we're, I mean, if we're going to do a multi-year extension, we'll bring it back to before fiscal
Or you go out to bid.
July 1, or if we decide that going out to bid is a, a good option, then obviously that would have to take place before the July 1. We lose, we lose our platform, our G.I.S. platform.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council authorizes the town manager to sign the fiscal year 24 G.I.S. Services and Housing Amendment 11 to extend the March 8, 2010 G.I.S. consulting and internet data hosting services agreement to continue to provide G.I.S. services to the town of North Branford not to exceed $8,500 for fiscal year ending June 30, 24.
All right, I have a motion from Councilor N'Golani. Do we have a second? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, on to, thank you, gentlemen. On to item D, 2024 White Hallow Sewer Referral Payment for October 2023 and January 2024. Victor, are you up for that? Oh, hey, Dave, you can get your chair up here tonight.
Didn't have that permission to
Sorry, Dave, got you a lot of that.
This is the annual exercise where we defer sewer payments for the October 1 and April 1 sewer payments. And it's for the same two people, Mary Ann Forbes and Charles Wayne. The criteria is that if they meet the income requirements for the home orders program, then they're eligible for the sewer deferral. This is, this is annual exercise that we do every year.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. All right. We have a, we have some verbiage here?
No.
No, is there, we just have to be, we, there should be some verbiage on it to accept it, right?
There's no motion per se.
Can we just build a motion out of that?
Build a motion.
All right, some, build a motion off of what this is
I'd like to make a motion to approve the sewer assessment deferral for Mary Ann Forbes and for Charles Wayne.
That's for the October 2023 and January 2024 payments.
Correct. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilor N'Golani. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Councilor Code. Any discussion?
That should be April 24.
Yeah, sorry, it's April 24, not January?
October 1 and April 1 of 24.
Okay, so take, so amend that to April. This is October in our, I'm sorry, in January in our agenda here, so my apologies. Okay, so October 23 and then April 24. Please make notes of that. Okay, any further discussion?
Say that again.
So we changed it, we added in here initially 2024 White Hallow Sewer Deferral Payment for October 23, and then we inadvertently put January 24. It should be April 24.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So is that amended?
Yeah, just, just amended that, that month. Info first to those 24.
Sewer payments are October and April.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstained? Thank you. Okay, then item E, complete streets. Victor, are you up for this one?
Make a motion? Bring up our town planner, Dave Perk.
Oh, our town planner. New victim up here now. How are you, sir?
I'm well. The complete streets policy is a policy that we will have saved streets and we will reconstruct our streets, thinking of pedestrian usage and bicycle usage. A lot of times when we apply for grants, they ask us whether we have a complete streets policy. And if we do, we get bonus points. So that's basically the main reason for it, other than the safety of our citizens.
So how does this apply to state? Because we have so many state roads that go through our town, how does this apply to that?
It does not apply to the state roads. The state does have a complete streets policy for their roads.
Okay.
What, what does it need, what does this, this particular policy? How much does that require that you have sidewalks or you don't have sidewalks?
It's, it's an impetus to have sidewalks. So when we apply for grants, we can say we have a complete streets policy where sidewalks are desirable and needed for the safety of our pedestrians.
So it doesn't mean that we automatically have to put them everywhere, but
Correct.
We applied for a grant, we have, okay.
Correct, it gives us an advantage, a leg up on the grants.
For specific neighborhoods, nothing, like, not 22, obviously, and 80 and things as such as that, which I think are obviously areas that we should have a little safer streets for bicyclists and possibly people to enjoy and walk. Okay.
So do we have complete streets? Are we, we meet the requirements, is that what you're saying?
It's just a policy that when we plan new streets or we are repairing streets, that we think of pedestrians and bicyclists.
So we think of them, doesn't mean that we have to do that.
So this is a request to go ahead and build a policy? Is that what we're hearing?
Correct.
Just to complete the policy, so we have.
It is, it is policy, as we've written.
Yes.
It's not, it's not a requirement that you do anything.
Just so we, I
All right, so, and then are there any state grants that we can look at or federal grants that we can look at once this has been applied or established?
There's a complete streets grant that we've been looking at for the Northford Center.
Okay.
And certainly this adds five or 10 points onto that application.
Okay.
So it's advantageous to have a policy.
So if we get the grant for, let's say, for the Northford Center, because I, do we have to put sidewalks through then?
No.
Even if you get the grant, they don't?
Well, the, the grant, the grant would allow you to, to spend money to create a plan to implement a plan.
Okay.
So it's, you're sort of putting the horse in front of the cart or?
Right, okay.
Spend some money to spend some money.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, good.
This has been around just for, by way of background, this complete streets concept has been around since, I think, 2011. I think it was passed by Governor Rell. So it's, it's, uh, it's a longstanding statewide concept.
I mean, it makes sense. There's, even in this town, but I've seen in a lot of other towns, there's areas that have sidewalk for 100 yards. It just, it ends.
Well, you have to, you have to start somewhere.
Yeah, that's true. I like that idea.
And you have to end it somewhere.
Yeah. I like, that's good, okay. Alright, so that being said, do we have a resolution that we can read?
There is one in our pack.
Please.
Do I, do you want me to read the whole thing?
I would, uh, I would say, can we just make note to the, it's rather long.
You can move the resolution as.
Stipulated in the packet?
Your packet.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the town of North Bramford resolution for complete streets as presented.
Second. Alright, motion by Council Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Uh, do we have any discussion?
Yeah, effective September 5th, 2023.
Okay, so effective?
The bid should be in its line, it should be in here.
It should be in there, right?
Well, it would get in there once the motion is passed.
I'm just making sure. It's effective September 5th, 2023.
Alright, so we'll stipulate that it would be as of today when we're making the motion. Alright, no, I like it. I like it, okay. No, no stone unturned over here in the North Bramford Town Council. Okay, so we have that, we have that amendment. Any other discussion? Alright, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you. Okay, on to item F, discussion and action of RFP 924003.
If I, excuse me, emergency service. Wanted to apologize to everybody on the council. I just want to let you know, I know some people were caught off guard with this last minute. From the chief, but, um, he had actually contacted me earlier in the day and asked whether I wanted to, you know, have the information ready for tonight or the next meeting. And I just, I had a busy day and I said, you know what, let's just do it today. So it wasn't Anthony handing in stuff last minute to you guys. It was, he had reached out to me and asked me first and, and I had asked him to, to get everything ready for tonight. So if anybody was caught off guard, it was my fault, not his.
We're calling the mob away from you. We're sitting over at Ron's house. Ron, thank you for letting us know.
This is just the, this is the approval of this RFP, yes?
Discussion, the awarding.
We're gonna award this RFP now.
The reality is, is this something that we've talked about?
Yes, we need to do it.
Preemptively known that, that unfortunately Vintec is at its demise.
Has some issues, correct.
It's unfortunate. We tried to stay loyal as pot, as long as possible, but we have to also be safe.
Hey, we gotta do our plan.
Correct.
So you just, you kind of summed it up for me. Uh, this came before you, obviously, when the RFP was put on the street. Uh, you guys blessed it. There were three responses to the RFP. Uh, in order of their pricing, you'll see on the cover memo, that Syrah Health Corp is actually a company out of Indiana that focuses on CNAs and LPNs and has no background in EMS at all. So I'm not sure why they even bid, quite honestly. Uh, which left, uh, number two, Northeast Fire Rescue, and number three, uh, Vintec Management. They did submit a bid, uh, higher than their, their current rate. On the second and third page, you have from the purchasing department, the cover memo, just listing the three respondents. And, uh, that graph that analyzes the various rates, it's kind of hard to read. Uh, so I kind of summarized it on the fourth page in, which looks at our 2324 budget as it was constructed with the current Vintec rates. And the current Vintec rates are 4467 an hour for the paramedics and 3146 an hour for the EMTs. As an aside, when they bid now, they bid 6150 for the paramedics and 4150 for the EMTs. So they were the higher of the, of the two, let's say legitimate staffing agencies. So the fire commission at their August 7th, uh, special meeting, uh, voted to recommend to the town council the adoption of the awarding of the RFP, uh, 924003 to Northeast Fire Rescue. And that's why it's before you folks tonight.
Alright, so before we start discussion, I'll just put the motion on the floor so we can discuss it.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved that the North Bramford Town Council, based on the recommendation of the Board of Fire Commissioners, votes to award RFP 924003 to Northeast Fire Rescue based on their response to the aforementioned RFP.
Second. Alright, so I have a motion by Council Angeloni, seconded by Council Code. Sorry, Ron, that was before you. Do we have any discussion? I actually have some discussions, so I'm gonna take myself first. I'm gonna say that unfortunately, we would, we were very sad to see the demise of Vintec. I think obviously the other, the bid that they put in is putting a Band-Aid on a broken leg, unfortunately. And even paying a little bit more, and I don't think it's going to resolve their issues. And that, again, that's very unfortunate. And then you said it perfectly, the other bidder, the other suitor, is someone that's not in the business and not local whatsoever.
Correct.
We don't have any options here, but we have a need, a very big need that needs to be addressed tonight. Um, and we want to make sure the continued safety of our, our residents. That said, I'd like to hear if we have some creative thinking on around how we go about the money aspects of things and how we, we make it fit within the budget.
Well, I don't, it's not gonna fit within the budget.
It's true. You're gonna bury the ambulance fund this year, basically.
Yeah.
So.
Which historically has been buried for many, many years. And obviously this year's budget, the subsidy from the town to the ambulance fund has already been set.
Yeah.
Uh, and there's, there's just no way to cover that much of a difference.
There's nothing in contingency that we can do about it. There's, it's just a matter of.
Yeah, we'll just wait and see how it takes out.
A little bit because it's a necessary expense for town. I, I just, I already know this, but I wanted to be on town record that this isn't us up here spending money because we want to spend more money. It's a required service
Right.
for our town that we're in an, this is the particular area and there's only so many suitors, there's only so many people that actually do this
Right.
business. And as Anthony stipulated, one is not in the business, not local, one is failing, no matter if we pay them more or not. So we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. It is, it is what it is.
I think it's also important to note too that
Okay, one second.
that we've gotten, um, quite a deal for probably much longer than we should have
Right.
from Vintec. So when you guys are, when you guys are assessing these numbers and taking a look at them, I mean, even the numbers that we're looking at from Northeast, they're still lower than what Madison pays their people and a lot of the surrounding towns pay their people as well. So even though it's going up for us quite a bit, we are still in a good spot and we're still actually gonna be paying, um, less than, uh, a lot of surrounding towns that's, that are in the same predicament we are.
So Anthony, can we, if we decide to go with Northeast, can we pick a date as far as when it is like October 1st or November 1st? I mean, all it, all that does is the, the difference of what we're short is roughly 17.5 a month.
Correct.
So we're already three months in. So if we can delay it to, let's say, November 1st, that's $70,000 off of that amount. So instead of being short 208, we would be short roughly $168,000.
I think it's valid to do that.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's, that's very, uh, very possible. Again, it's gonna take some time for the new person to come in and onboard all the employees, go through the list. He may not take 100% of the folks. He may, there may be some that don't want to go to the new employer.
Sure.
So there might, there might be some time to get the personnel up to snuff. And again, working with, as, as Counselor Plechuk mentioned, Vintec has been our guy for 20 years. I mean, we grew up with Vintec and he's been very faithful to us and
He's great.
great guy to work with. And he's wanted to work with us as far as the transition period as well. He's not, you know, basically saying, if I don't get it, you're done tomorrow kind of thing. So your, your point is, is, is very valid that it's behooves us to kind of take our time to do it properly.
So what would you say would be a good date? November 1st or December 1st?
I would, well, I'd rather talk to the winner once I talk, once we award it to him tonight and see what his timeframe is. He may say it's gonna take me 60 days to get everybody on board. I don't know until I talk to him. He may say I could do it next week, I, until I talk to him after we officially award it, to get a firm handle on what his timeframe is.
That's fair.
I don't know. He, he may, like I said, he may.
Brian, are there any legalities as far as how good this is for? Are we under any timeframe as to when this needs to take place?
Yeah, we've looked, we looked at the contract.
Right.
Right.
He, there's currently a 60-day clause in the contract with, with Vintec. Uh, but based on the circumstances and the, uh, events that have happened, he's willing to waive the 60-day clause.
Very good to us.
Yeah, very good with us. So this, it does say 60 days in, in his current agreement.
Well, 60 days would help us out, right?
Yes.
It's our benefit.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
So we'll coordinate with Anthony once you approve this and he speaks to the new vendor.
So we don't have to have a date in the motion. That's the only rea, that was one of the reasons I asked. We wanted to put a date in the motion.
We can approve the RFP and then they can finalize the RFP.
With the new vendor.
We have to coordinate. Well, Anthony, I'll coordinate and get the sign-offs we need from the current. So there's no, you know, we don't open the town up to.
Alright, pressure to question?
The question is, is he liquid enough for the 60 days?
I believe so, yes. Yes.
Is he?
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to, to say that he is, yeah.
Okay. And Northeast, and Northeast?
We, we have, just, just to, to rest any concerns, um, the officers of Company 4 have worked diligently for the last few months to take all the current Vintec employees and have their paperwork in place. We talked about it previously.
We did.
If, if he fails tomorrow, we have, we have a means to work it out.
We talked about this.
Right. So we, we have a contingency plan exactly, so.
I've talked to a lot of the, I've talked to some of the EMTs. Uh, they're all for this.
Right.
They're, you know, they're 100% clients, so they're willing to go with, you know, they, they want to stay.
Good.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you for surprising us with this. Any other questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Trying to understand, you're saying that Vintec is so capable of working with us, doing anything for us, they had a lower bid. I don't understand why the recommendation is to go with somebody else. And Vintec, if we grew up with them for the past 20 years, is there a personal problem with them?
Oh, no, no, just the op, what, what happened, quite honestly, was as Counselor Plechuk mentioned.
Hold on a second. They had a, they didn't have a lower bid.
Well, the current bid.
They had the highest bid.
They had the higher bid going forward.
I guess as I'm looking at these figures.
Well, that's the.
947,000 versus 1.
That's the current bid with the current pricing that they have.
Okay.
Yeah, it actually.
I wasn't made for me to.
So that, that's the current pricing and then they bid a higher amount going forward.
If you look at page three of what Anthony sent, that has the, the bid numbers and under Vintec, the hourly's were 42 and 77.
In all honesty, I would need Superman's eyes to know this before. So the problem, the problem is, is that Vintec is on the verge of going out of business or close to whatever.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would minimize any, any negative comments if we could in a public forum.
Absolutely, no.
Sorry, they've been fine to us.
Absolutely fantastic to us.
Wishing nothing but the best.
And they're willing to work with us moving forward for the transition too, which, which speaks to his, that speaks to his character. So that we really appreciate that.
Yep, absolutely. He's, we thank him as well. Okay, so is there any other discussion before we move on? Alright, I'll accept the motion to accept the bid, uh, bid 924003. Oh, of course, we had to, yes, we did, of course. Thank you, um, thank you. Yes, stop voting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On behalf of the fire commission and the officers, we appreciate your support.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, on to item G, uh, exceptions of the steep grant. Uh, so I was surprised with this earlier. This is just a little bit of, um, organizationally, uh, structure to get, to accept the steep grant for the police station build. Uh, it was something that was initially accepted per se, and then it had to go through a, a process. Mike, you can pick up where I may be getting this wrong. Had to go through the process of the state. The state may have slightly dropped the fall in timing of it. Uh, and then North Bramford as well, they had to take, you know, action on this officially. So essentially, we're taking action tonight to accept this grant, which is, what, 147?
It's 128,205.
Okay, 128,205. Okay, so I will, uh, accept the motion to accept this steep grant, please.
So moved.
Second. Alright, uh, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Palladino. Any discussion?
Yeah, just wondering how this extra money affects our budget on the police.
I think it was already.
It's not extra, yeah.
It's not extra, it was.
Was it part of it?
It's already part of it.
Already part of it, yeah.
Okay, I, because I noticed that this was August of 2020, which we weren't in office at the time.
Right.
And I know for the past couple of years, the police station in the Bramford State, so this is already factored into.
Correct, yeah, it's just the formality aspect of it.
Okay.
Right, so we can actually get paid. Okay, uh, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you. Alright, on to item H, appointment of Steve Trino as alternate to the Blue Print Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Abelson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. We thank Steve again and wish him, uh, luck as an alternate on that committee. Uh, I will accept the motion for adjournment, please.
Yeah.
Oh, I missed, where did I miss?
13.
Oh, my apologies. I apologize. Yes, item 13, I wouldn't want to hold that off. Alright, item 13, citizen statements and petitions. I wrote over it. Are there any citizen statements and petitions? Sorry, Mr. Rose.
You guys are gonna say.
Alright, well, um, stipulating it has to be a 30-second.
I'm gonna go make a simple comment and I'll be back at 7:30 for dinner.
Nice.
So, yeah, you guys, yeah, did you do that on purpose? So Al Rose, 40 Valley Road. So first of all, all right, see, I use the word so. That's her pet peeve with me. So anyway. You know, I've been getting myself rebuilt after I got an ambulance ride that Anthony, you need to, where'd he go? Send me that phone number again. They never have sent me a bill.
Oh, good, that'll, that'll help us.
I, I, I called him and told him to send it to me in April, and I haven't got it yet. But anyway. So I got a new eye put in last week. So I was sitting around at home. Now I got a new lens put in where, you know, that fixed me up. And I'm looking at, uh, so I'm like, alright, I gotta stay home for four or five days. So I, uh, get out Grandma's scrapbook. I'm like, you know what? And she's so, you know, she was in 100th year and she probably had 90 years of scrapbooks on the history of North Bramford. And, uh, on our end of town. And, um, so I picked the one that's like from the mid 1950s. Cause I'm like, you know what, let me check out what the high school thing was. And, uh, so sure enough, 1963 is a picture of the North Bramford High School is gonna be built. $1.3 million. And as Walter knows, it was built so well that we have paid almost half of that in extra to knock it down. So, um, just thought to you. And then in, uh, and then in 66, they had to add on to it. So in 63, 64, they, they, they opened it in 64. 66, they added the Y. And then in 72, they added, made the diamond. And, uh, but in 68, there were 3,031 students in North Bramford school system. So, so that was a fun fact. But then, uh, I got another one. And just so you know, this isn't what I'm here to tell you guys tonight. And I shared it with Michael, but I shared it with Rose. And I'm giving you guys, uh, see, I know the, I, I know that charter better than, better than, uh, some people. I knew the word shell was in there. And anyway, um, you don't have a time limit on public comment unless, unless it's the White Hollow Sewer people coming to yell at us. So anyway, I found a thing from 1984. And it was a full-page ad in the, uh, story in the New Haven Register that was telling us that there's this beautiful thing up on the hill above Route 80, Lake Gallard. And the Audubon Society and the Yale Forestry and the Water Company was gonna build two classrooms up there and they were opening it up to have, you know, uh, hiking and, and, you know, everything that all of us that sit, where you guys have been sitting for years are saying, why do we have the most beautiful place in the state? And you can't step up there, you know? Well, in 1984, this was gonna happen. And, uh, I don't think Franny's here anymore because Franny gave me the answer. It was the New Haven Water Company that was making that deal. But the Audubon Society was raising money and, and they were putting classrooms up there for education on water co, uh, water quality. And, uh, somehow it turned into the Regional Water Authority and never happened. But anyway, so if you guys could work on that, that'd be great. You know, somebody know the Audubon Society, see if we can get them to, uh, get that thing opened up.
Push it.
So, so anyway, now that I've punished you with Al's trivia, um.
I actually appreciate it.
I'll tell you why I'm here.
Look into that.
So, across the street from the farm is, um, you know, is that, uh, there's a medical building that's going in and it, and it was approved, um, when, when, uh, the previous owner had it. And, and I actually spoke in favor of it for him because I thought, well, something's gonna go on the corner and this doesn't seem like it's too bad. So I, I didn't know anything about what was going on with it. And, uh, so then we all read in the paper that, uh, the state of Connecticut is giving the $5 million grant and that medical facility is gonna go forward. So, you know, as Al sees it, I read it, I'm like, how the heck is there a $5 million grant from this state and nobody knows anything about it? So I do my due diligence and I start looking into it. And I've spent a couple of months or whenever the article was in there, looking into it. And the first thing that happens is the few Bramford police officers I know, you know, are spreading the word, suckers. You can have it. So I look into that and I'm like, what the heck is, what, what is going in over here? And, and there's misinformation in, in everything. So I start asking and I, and I went to our, our state politicians first and I said, what did, you know, you guys were all there in the article. What's going in across the street from my property? And, uh, oh, it, it, it's all good, it's all good. And I said, well, I'm hearing there's an awful lot of police calls at it. So they get back to me and say, oh, oh, we checked with them. They only had one, um, one call last year. So you all know that I see the Chief of Police and Assistant Chief every Monday night. So I said, hey, this doesn't make sense. The police officers from Bramford are telling me that there's 10 to 15 calls a week. And then I'm hearing that there's a one call in a year. So then we got to the bottom of that. So I had Jimmy Lovelace contact Bramford and, and, uh, the medical facility that's moving to town is operating out of Bramford. And they had 22 calls at it last year. And Jimmy said to me, he goes, you know, that's, that's manageable. A lot of them are with, um, their clients having to get transported to. to, to New Haven.
Emails.
Or the hospital or whatever. And he says, so that, that seems doable. He says, what, what's not doable? And if, you know, I don't know if you guys, and I will, for those of you who wonder why I'm here, I talked to at least three or four of the counselors and understood that you guys know nothing about it. I had called, I had called the town engineer and asked him about what's going on with the road because, you know, I've, ever since we didn't buy that property 'cause it was family property in the nineteen twenties and we turned it down in the nineteen eighties 'cause we're like, what do we want this for? There's been two other developers that tried to develop on that corner. And talking about complete streets, well, when the state redid that corner a few years back, when you're driving down one thirty-nine, look at the, look at the white line for pedestrians and bicyclers on the right-hand side, right on the corner. I measured it, it's nine inches to a piece of ledge. And the state came all the way up and it's like Kurt Weiss and myself. I'm like, guys, you gotta keep going. You gotta take that chunk of rock out of it. They didn't. So you do not wanna be on, on that side of the road there. So in the, in the past, developers that were gonna develop that property were told by DOT that they had to add a lane. And I was able to obtain, I've got a nephew that's a DOT, a state, state of Connecticut surveyor. And I was able to obtain some of the information that's going back and forth. And, and it appears to me, and this is all as Al sees it, appears to me, they're trying to do less than was approved with the prior approval. You know, I don't know that for sure. I do believe that they're involved with the zoning department. But what they're not, what, what, what really kinda irks me is when I went to put a farm winery that was on the books in the planning and zoning in town, but because my farm is zoned industrial, I had to send out, and I couldn't tell you, but it was more than two hundred letters, certified letters, because the winery is on a fifty-plus acre piece of property. And you have to send them to all neighbors within five hundred feet. So for me to put something that's already on the books in town on our property that we've owned for three hundred and eighty years, we have to send out all these certified letters. So we have this thing coming to town and, and there were a lot of red flags. And you guys all know I'm pretty skeptical about anything that somebody says. You have to prove it to me and you gotta hit me over the head for me to believe you. And so, you know, they're, they're, this thing coming to town and it's gonna fit exactly what was approved before. Well, what was approved before? So right now, this thing's coming to town at their residential facilities, they have three of them in Branford, twelve to fifteen calls a week, they're major calls. Town of Branford has fifteen police officers on staff, North Branford on a shift. North Branford has three. So for economic development or whatever you wanna, you know, whatever you wanna call it, why this is not being presented to the planning and zoning board members? Why, 'cause right now, as Al sees it, we got the two new guys in town involved with this. We got the assistant town manager and the new zoning guy. So we got the two guys and, and you all know, you know, new employees don't really have a good track record in town. So we have these two new guys and they're the only people in town that know anything about this. I asked Jimmy Lovelace and the chief and, and you know, I meet with Victor and Dave Palumbo every Monday. I'm like, are you guys, is the traffic authority in town involved with the worst corner in town? We've had two deaths there in the last two years. And they said, we were the first time. Well, now there's stuff going back and forth from zoning, from the zoning enforcement agent and the DOT and the client. And the stuff that I read, you know, and I think, and credit to the zoning guy, he's asked for some things and the DOT's asked for some things. And the client's like, well, we, you know, the DOT asked for, we want to see turning radiuses for the town's largest apparatus. So that would be the tower truck. They send back, oh, we did, and I don't know the number, like VCO thirty. So it must be like a thirty-foot piece of apparatus, not a fifty-foot piece of apparatus or Anthony could fill us in on how long the new ladder truck's gonna be. But all these things, again, Al has to send out two hundred letters and have public hearings to put a farm winery on the farm that's on the books. And this group's coming to town. Our zoning board doesn't look at it. Our traffic authority is not involved in looking at it. And I gotta tell you, they're kinda upset that the information going back and forth is not being shared with them. And they're the first ones to admit, we can't overrule the state DOT. But they typically take comments from us and information on it. So I'm here and I know that, you know, believe me, we all know that I know zoning. Elected officials have nothing to do with zoning. But it really used to bug me when we'd be sitting here and something like this would come into town and we know nothing about it. So I came here for two reasons, to fill you guys in on what's going on and also to see if we can't get, you know, I've gotten probably in my lifetime, I don't know if I got eight hundred or a thousand building permits and zoning permits. And there's always notes on the permit. And what we need to do, because we don't have the infrastructure and, and I don't wanna live across the street from it, we need a note on the zoning plan or the building permit, whichever one has a place for, you know, notes that just says, this is not and cannot be a residential facility without further, you know, applications. And then that way, because, you know, the group coming in there is only taking, I think, a quarter of the square footage that is approved there. So if you're a developer, and, you know, and there's a lot of empty medical buildings around. So if you're a developer trying to get doctors' offices in there, you're gonna be looking for any way to, to fill your building. So my biggest fear is that this thing becomes a residential facility or overnight stays. And that's not what it was approved for. And it, and we do need to make sure that that note is on the, is on the permits. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Okay, appreciate that, Mr. Rose. Certainly pertinent information. It's nice to learn as a counselor, which we're apprised of. Okay, any other comments in public? Anthony, do you have anything on, on line?
Negative.
Bill Savage, Taro, Sunnyside Drive. Mike, this veterans thing you're setting up, is it in reference at all to this? 'Cause this is public act that was approved and come down from the state in two thousand thirteen.
No, it's not. This is, this is a different thing. This is requiring towns, there's needed a veteran service contact person. We already have that designated, Kathy Poston.
Okay, but it goes on to say that she, a committee would be set up? And it's a lot similar. I'm just trying to clarify because this is, I'm no expert on any of this. I just wanted to see, initiate it, but I don't think we wanna have anything conflicting here either. Because some of the criteria on this is a couple of members have to be bilingual and there's a little more involved. So I was gonna ask to, in reference to any back and forth, as far as the commission, or what's the commission made? The attorney could look into the public act.
Yeah, we can take a look at it.
Yeah, we'll check it out.
And see, it's more important to have that conversation afterward.
This allowed, that public act allows a committee to be created by a town by ordinance. So it may or may not fit and we'll, we'll check that out.
Okay.
All right, yeah, good comments. I talked about sidewalking a little while ago. You, you probably know, but some, some areas in town is tough. And you might also know that a lot of people don't really like, I'm not far against it in a way, but a lot of people don't like sidewalks in front of their house because they have trouble in the winter time. I mean, I got a corner house, it's on a big street. I'm not really worried, but I can take the snowblower out there. But there's been battles back and forth on, on that type of thing. And it's my last meeting, I talked about blight for a minute. I actually talked to, went to Dave, Dave is here tonight. I'm forgetting his last name for a minute, the town planner. And asked him how he felt about it. And Perkins, right? Sorry. Anyway, and I got a good vibes from, not gonna speak for him. But again, I, I hopefully you guys have considered this. I think from our brief conversation that he was aware of the, that performance maintenance thing is another word for blight. And so he could fill us in on a lot of that stuff. And, and something, it's enough on blight, but, and I mentioned something about the trash contract, you know, contract. You know, I've been a little harsh on that, disappointed. Now, you pass the bulky waste thing for ninety-five thousand a year. And there was, the paperwork on it shows the previous contract, meaning the five year, with the figures for the five years laid out that include a three percent, it's an increase every year. And if you look at, we are in year three of that contract, which is the first year we're adding the bulky waste to it. You add the contract and the ninety-five, you come to million four oh eight. But if you go into year four, you take the, the price for the contract, picking up and delivering and add the bulky waste to it, he adds another ten thousand to that ninety-five. Now, I thought I understood and I've proven to be wrong that he was gonna take a little increase every year, but not to the tune of ten percent. He's taking ten thousand and ninety-five thousand, that's ten percent. And the last year, the contract plus the ninety-five is adding twenty percent, or twenty thousand to that, so. There again, I mentioned before, I hope if I'm still aligned on that committee that when that trash contract comes around, we really get involved. And I mean everybody, you know, a lot of it, supposedly was left up to our committee at the time. And we took the hit for the, but if you guys wanna get involved next time, because we're really, you know, we're, we're giving them a lot of money. You go online and do a little investigation of how to set up a carding business or something like that. Gives you a lot of general figures, but, and, and they'll, they'll put in there different things and this is Googled stuff, so, when are you gonna believe it? They leave, they leave themselves a pretty good cushion all the time. And there's no reason why we have to put up with that. He's been a good contractor for a time, but I think the tables have turned. He's taken, taken advantage of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Take that back.
You can have it, yeah. Okay, any other further public comment? Anthony, him there?
Negative.
Thank you. All right, that said, move out of public comment. I'll accept the motion for adjournment.